And we're going to have the local parlor, Josh, from the First Baptist Church out there. Meet you. Meet you there.
Yeah, I want to pray with you. Father, right now, we come to you humbly, Father, thanking you that you are God and you're good. Lord, I pray over the decisions and the decision makers, Father. We do this every Friday by name. Father, today we get a chance to lay out on. Father, I pray that you would grant wisdom, just as Solomon said, in any leadership position, Father, wisdom is the key. So, Lord, I pray that they would make decisions that are wise for our county. And, Father, I pray that the attacks that come, Father, will be shielded by you and that you will lead them in what is right and true and honest for our community, Father. It's a great community, Father. When I got here, it was placed on my heart, why not do it? And, Lord, I pray that over these, these people, Father, that they would seek your will, seek your face, and seek your hand in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Amen. The caller, please, or you do have four, and we know that you're a guest this year today. And first, we have one who has consented agenda. And I would pray that all of those, if you have any questions, I'm sure you can ask those. I see that the finish of the previous video has concluded. Can you put in the hearing program? I'm not included.
And clerk, county clerk's report is for July and August. Excuse me. There are notes precinct 150, precinct 1, precinct 4, collection still up. It's like two or three stamps on it. Collection 14.
Yes.
On the meetings. I got with Ms. Liz, and I have got her called up till this last month. So she's got all minutes been called up except for August, of course, this month. And I hope to have these the rest of me part of this one.
You see anything else, Jill?
No, I didn't. I didn't see it. I got it.
You also don't have mine. Mine, I was not here until seven, seven days, I think.
She left at that time, yeah, okay.
For one time.
She left at that time.
Didn't even notice. Told me so.
Make it?
Yeah, I make the motion for the minutes, for the inclusion of the previous minutes for another available.
I second.
Okay, there's no discussion on a consent agenda. All in favor? I vote.
I'm going to restate that. I said, "approve the minutes, approve the agenda and the exception."
Okay, this is going to be the actions. And number one is discuss the possible, except maintenance agreement between Windstream and Newton County for technical support. That is the agreement between us and Windstream and our telephone service. Just renewing it, really. Is it worth renewing? Is it worth renewing?
These are on the motels within the courthouse, the motel phone system.
And then, yeah. Keep it set, Father.
We got ahead of this.
Tell me.
One second. Motion been made, and second, we accept the maintenance agreement between Windstream and Newton County for technical support. Any discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Number two is to authorize a person, 2015 F-250 Ford truck for a Newton County extension agent. This is a used truck that we've got in mind for, depending upon a new one, or...
I make the motion to approve 2015 Ford F-250 for extension.
Motion been made, and second, we approve a 2015 F-250 Ford for Newton County extension agent. Any discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Number three, discuss an appropriate approved contract between the Fire Patrol Protection System in Newton County for fire alarm system and fire extinguisher maintenance.
I was going to ask, whatever happens to the fire extinguisher there? I still have my fire extinguisher staff there.
When we get through signing this, this will make him obligated to come and serve. He'd been here once before and presented that program, and he just now got all the contracts done.
Is this covered the whole county?
Yeah. Whole county.
We need down there.
Yeah, it's covered the whole county. And all those county buildings.
I guess we just give them power.
Yeah. And I'll be getting that telephone call, number two, y'all, for 24-hour service. I know the Sheriff Department has some questions, and we'll be sending that out in email.
I get first or then, not?
Yes. But if there's a representative here in this area, we'll leave that phone number also. I make the motion that we approve a contract between the Fire Patrol Protection System and the Newton County for the fire alarm system and the fire extinguisher maintenance.
One second.
Motion been made, and second, we approve a contract between Fire Patrol Protection System in Newton County, fire alarm system, and the fire extinguisher maintenance. Any more discussion?
Yeah. Is this, this 14605, is this, is this just for this special system, whatever, K building? Or is this all the fire extinguishers? Does this include everything?
Yeah, it includes everything. Not all in favor? I vote. Number four is to discuss an appropriate approved contract between Allison Bass and the U L L P in Newton County, precinct redistricting. This will be after the census. This is the only person I've got that has a flag. I'm sure there are more of them. I think that Bill can probably, in Latin, this is probably one did back in 10.
He's only had one other, and he was out in San Antonio. I guess he was out in San Sebastian. I wish, of course, I will be here, but I would like to see them, they've been spraining up some of these precincts and get them more aligned. Not a tall rock into this precinct in my county farm.
Yeah, that's not right.
Forty-five miles, $40. I don't know how they're going to do it, because you can't dilute it. Though, there's got to be a better way. And I figure precinct 4 is going to come up and take 1004 again. That should have everything moved in. Do you have any idea how many people moved out to Deweyville? Was it really that many people left?
I don't think so, but I don't know that period. But the school and all, gun show.
School doesn't show that that's what they're doing.
We've all been in residence. I would, I would guess it'd be less than 50.
Oh. You might, you might have to take that cell phone back.
Actually, that, that's the only thing that makes sense. It doesn't make sense for you to drive around trip for 150 miles.
It takes, it takes a solid hour in the machine before you set the plate down.
Around trip to do one road.
Two hours.
Yeah.
I think there'll be a lot more questions this time, once we start that process.
Yeah. Is the census in?
No, the census got started.
No, they can't do it. Our board contends that.
No, they, they've been all around mine. I've heard that the lakes, they've been there, have something. The lady out of Macadash has been doing it.
I'm not, I'm not saying anything, my.
I helped her six months ago.
I just cooked nothing with these.
That's what it is.
People come in, tell them loud, no.
See, I hear motions, I think.
I am very welcome about being around.
I make the motion to approve a contract between Allison Bass and the U L L P in Newton County.
Second. Motion been made, and second, we entered into a contract between Allison Bass, the U L L P in Newton County for precinct redistricting. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Okay, number five is to recognize the appointment of Jeff Newton, all some of the recovery group boards and co-executives to record. Y'all have that, y'all have packet there. Because you have a representative from long term, long term recovery. Anyway, on the executive board, we've got Charles Persett, Karen Smith, Maggie Jones, Colleen Hughes, Rodney Noweworthy, Kathy Pearson, Danny Lewis, and Nikola Persett, and Billy Jordan, and Sue Downing is a co-executor.
I make the motion to approve it, Paul.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if we have to approve it, but we will approve it. It's just recognizing, but all in favor? I vote. Number six is to approve the veteran service officer quarterly report. Y'all look at that, he's been pretty busy.
Again, I hear nothing but good things about the man. He's really healthy.
He's made a great kind of job out of it. He worked. Probably doing something. I make the motion. Yeah, I make the motion that we approve the veteran service officer quarterly report.
Second.
Motion been made, and second, we approve the veteran service officer quarterly report. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Discussing for appropriate approved contract between Alpine Air Service Company in Newton County. This is over at the Civic Center, where I took the second bid for taking down the air conditions and re-establishing the foundation. Quite a bit of difference between these two contracts, and so I'm asking y'all to approve it between Alpine Air Service.
Am I missing what it, what it bid was?
Three.
Had to learn how to read, had to. It's a little bit different.
Yeah.
The week he was informed, and he did good work before that.
I made sure that he was aware of everything that had to be done, because there is quite a difference in the practice.
Save that kind of money. You're cool with that. Never thought of all that yet.
Yeah. I make that motion that we approve the contract between Alpine Air Service Company in Newton County.
Second.
Motion been made, and second, we approve the contract between Alpine Air Service Company in Newton County. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Okay, discussing possible take action bid between the receiver, the property held in trust by the tax entities. Ms. Moore, is she here?
Ms. Moore. We received a bid from the City of Newton, Parkview property that's held in trust by the entities. The bid was for $1,600. The property was continuous with the City of Newton's office, couple blocks over here. And it was a bid trust last year in November of 18. The address is 9113. Should it be approved by the former county, we'll provide the due time of the entities.
Do you make that motion? Yeah. I make that motion that the hostile action was already bid through C from property held in trust by the tax entities. Second.
Motion been made, and second, we accept the bid for the property held in trust by tax entity. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Number nine, to discuss current contributions to the tax, Jeff Newton County Health District. Ms. Payne?
I'm Vicki Payne, Jessica Newton County Public Health District, and I'll be real brief, because I see you have a lot of paperwork to get out of. I want to first thank you for your contributions to the health district, and the most recent being the sub courthouse usage in Deweyville, where we'll be providing clinics two afternoons a month. And I also want to thank you for the board members, who are very community oriented, and they're watching out for your people in Newton County. We're working on our budget, and we're paying 360 a month for utilities at our Newton side. And if you could consider paying that for the health district, we would appreciate it. It would help all of our programs. And that's all I have. And I thank you, and if you have any questions.
How much is it?
It averages 360.
And that's for the electric bill that, that, that over here?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And I'm going to leave these folders to tell about the clinics that we're going to be having.
I make the motion we pay utilities. That building.
Is that building building?
Yes. And, and we don't charge them for the use of building either. We, I don't think we've increased our allotment for several years. We've not increased our payment for Jeff Newton Public Health District for years, right? But, so it's like...
You made a monetary contribution in providing the building. That would be about $4,300 a year.
You made that motion, Bill?
Yes. I'll say.
Motion been made, and second, that we will up the utility electric bill for the health district, and it averages somewhere around 360 a month, and yearly average about 4,300. Any more discussion? Not all in favor?
I think that doesn't mean y'all leave the lights on every day when you leave.
Well, I'll tell them that I would appreciate it, Karen.
So y'all going to take, who's going to take care of it this month?
It's already in our head. What we do, that's the one that we, we read that feature.
In the closet?
Reenverses, yeah. So it's already counted. It doesn't start taking research.
Yeah. Page number 10 is to discuss if we're to approve a full-time secretary position for precinct 4, Commissioner Gene Thompson. Gene, you got anything to say about that?
Here's the... He needed it all. This is, he's got a workforce employee right now through the program they've got, and it's going to be ending September 30th. And we were talking about it. He was approved a full-time position for next year. His secretary will start in January 1st. But I ran his numbers, he's got the cash in his budget to go ahead and start October 1st. And I talked to him a little bit before court, and he's going to be short about $6,000 in his salaries. So I told him what we did is I moved some out of his road materials that he hasn't used to take care of that, and he was okay with that. So this way, he can, if it's approved, he can go ahead and post the job and get somebody hired when that starts October 1st.
Good night.
Yeah, September 30th is his last day of his work.
I was going to ask you, have you heard anything else? Are they going to extend it, or?
They're, they have given me the words they are going to extend it through March, but they will not extend it for his employee or administrative services, only labor.
That's what I'm saying, man. I've got, I've got one. So. I make that motion to approve full-time secretary position.
Second. Motion been made, and second, we approve a full-time position for precinct 4. Any more discussion? Not all in favor?
Thank you.
I vote. Okay, after you do that, you have to have a budget amendment approving a full-time secretary for precinct 4.
I make that motion here for approving a full-time secretary position for precinct 4.
Second. Motion been made, and second, we approve the budget amendment to a full-time position for precinct 4 commission. All in favor? I vote. Okay, number 12 is discussing if appropriate approved contract between GHS and IRS, a credit card package to Assistant Court and collecting payment online. And I'm not up on this to do this. Over there, Paul. Yeah.
I had received an email back August 27th in reference to GHS, who takes our payments right now for credit. Not really credit cards, it's just for the payments, like those are in collections. What they do is they'll take, we'll send them to payments, because if they collect payments and we collect payments, there's going to be an overage. And they are updated to what's called Icon, and we can't update all of that yet because of our server. So that's another issue. But in the switchover, they're now offering, when we come to the court about three years ago, about a credit card system that would cost $10,000, and we just didn't have it in the budget. Now that they're converting over to Icon, those who can, they're offering to us, since we can't go to Icon yet, which is just an update, I mean, we can still use our net data and everything, they're offering it to us for free now, since they're doing this big conversion. So at this point, I sent it, she sent an email stating they wouldn't hold our payments anymore. And then I talked to her. She said, "We could keep using the certified payments that we use right now, and they could just go in blind on a website, not know what their balance is or whatever, and that would make a nightmare for us and Liz, because we would have to send Liz a reposition for reimbursement." So she said that this program would allow them, just like in Orange County or surrounding counties, they go into a website, and they'll pick their county, what precincts, and they pay a fine, then enter by their last name or their date of birth, and it pulls up their account, and it's up to date. So we could continue where we're at with certified payments and just get all the payments coming to us again, which is lightening the load on our clerks. But with this program being free, I just thought, you know, if we go ahead and do this step towards getting in compliance with Icon, by the time we transition over, that's one less thing we have to do. And at this time, it's free. Three years ago, it was $10,000. And she did send me an email, I think it's in your packet, I don't know, I don't think I had that to Angie in time, but the one that shows up, and I can make copies of it for all of you. It says, they say it on the phone, IRA is normally $10,000 service that we provide for online search and payment of traffic citations. With the changes that GHS is implementing, we are offering the IRA credit card package to your JP offices at no charge, so we can get JP 1, JP 2, JP 3, and JP 4 all set up with an online search and payment option at no cost to the county. You can also use our services in-person transactions, or you can choose to save with certified payments per year in-person transactions, it's completely up to you. And the reason we had petitioned earlier for going with this is to utilize everything that data has to offer. We had a separate company for credit cards, so this would just... We had a separate company for credit cards, so this would just eliminate that. And as they come into our office, we could also use that online site offering that data. And she had enclosed a contract for each court as well. Do y'all have the copies of that? I think it's all in with that.
Can I look at that right? I have to see if the letters in there. You look at it? It's kind of difficult to handle. Just put this one in there.
Yes. The first letter behind my agenda request is showing where it's free of charge to the county. And after each one is four sets of contracts for JP 1, JP 2, JP 3, JP 4. The only thing that I saw in the contract is that we're checking that we've seen the, is stating that we're signing off that we have seen the rules for MasterCard, American Express, Visa, and Discover Card, which those are all online. And it's a standard like 5% rate that they charge the customer. We don't pay that. We get our money and they get theirs from the fee for using the sign.
Okay. What's going to be the benefit to you?
That I can use it offering that data. That I can finally, you know, that was the big thing with certified payments. We have to get out of that data, go into another stream. Whereas we can go onto that website. I mean, if we have time, I can pull up on my phone to show it. It's very easy. You select your county, you go to your precinct, and they can enter by either their last name or the ticket number. And then it automatically goes to that site. And it's like, it's linked to net data. So there's no overpayment there. It's like if I can tell, if someone can call me and I say, your payment's 10210. I'm going to get a check or something, I don't know for 103, you know?
Yeah.
Because I've done that before. And it would just make a nightmare if we tried to keep doing the certified payments because they're not in real time with the account. So. And it just makes utilizing everything that data has to offer since we're paying for it anyway.
And it'll make it easier for the citizens to use it too, because they can see exactly how much their ticket is or whatever.
Right. And what they owe.
And what they owe. And they need to put that in there.
And the good thing about once GHS was taking our payments, once it sees elections, that's the most that's ever going to be added to it. Because they've added the Omni Fee, they've added the collections fees to it. But if they're making payments and all of a sudden collections picks it up, they can see why. Because after a length of time that it's gone, you know, they have this time payment fee. But then they'll have the 30% added for our collections company. But they can keep up with all of that. The only drawback before was that it costs $10,000 and now that's gone. So how do y'all feel?
Exactly, you know, just I think the main thing is if they will be on board with what they owe, we don't have any contribution there. We'll have to reenvers or we can go back and say, I'm sorry, we did not pay it all. And then we've got payment phone. And that's the biggest.
They'll get access to their account, just to see what the balance is. And like I said before, it was $10,000 for the upgrades that each office needed, but... And I think on the contract it shows where each JP is the merchant. So it would be each of us signing off on that for our office. I believe that's how we did it, or maybe the county did it for certified payments.
I think they signed it. And then there's part of this that the treasurer's office has to fill out.
Right.
Maybe it's not a contract with certified.
That was the only thing I didn't know is it's certified.
But don't think it is. We will probably have to send them a letter saying we're not going to use it. Because it needs to be, I mean, it'd cost you.
Right. Certified payments, it cost anything either. That's why we looked with them.
Yeah. I'll look into that, make sure we don't have to deal with.
And like I said, the way she explained it, it's just like we knew it's certified payments. We can do it over the phone. Since the 16th, we haven't used like this swap thing that comes with certified payments. We manually entered them all. So it'd be the same way.
You looked over at Courtney?
Just now. Looks okay. The display is on it now while she's talking.
I'm not understanding why it costs $10,000 a year ago and...
Well, it was a conversion that we weren't up on. Our server isn't big, it doesn't have enough room. Isn't that what it was?
Yeah, we got an updated server.
Yeah. For the Icon program though.
Oh, it's still on paper?
Yeah. Still on paper. The Icon part. But since they're converting, converting all the courts to the Icon, and they're just going to slip us in because we're not doing the full conversion to Icon?
Okay.
That since they're updating everything, that's all that that was? Is that going to each office and ripping bigger inputs?
So what's going to cost us anything further down the line, six months from now?
Once we convert to the Icon, and I think all that's way to Icon, and I think the only thing that's preventing that right now is the size of our server. But that's what it was before. It would be $2,500 for each office to do before. Because Icon hasn't, hadn't made it our way yet. But like, Orange County's on Icon now, and they're in the area to do that. It's the way I understood it. But I mean, Kim's number is on there for any questions that, you know, we may have. But that's what they were explaining in there, that since GHS was in the conversion phase of this, that they would do it at our offices for no money.
I'm off the three steps, but I'm just worried about six months down the road.
And the lady that sent the first email, Deana Urban, we met her the other day, Judge. I think that's the name. She's supposed to be coming through, I think, either Wednesday or Thursday. So we could ask some more questions.
Yeah. That's fine.
I'll make the motion that we tabled this discussion until we talk with Deana Urban and answer all our questions about future status.
Set.
Motion been made second to table this motion for further study. Any more discussion? All in favor? Viable. Okay, number 13 is considering appropriate approve making changes to the current library system policies in regard to adding non-Newton County resident fees.
Okay. A couple months ago, I mentioned during permission of court that I had been doing some research on non-residential fees for library cards. We do not have that currently in our policy. And so what I had done, I have, I've contacted several other libraries who actually do this. And what it is, is a long time ago, the Texas Lone Star Grant process allowed everyone in the state of Texas to have a free library card. However, when, and they funded it and all, well, that is no longer, it's no longer anymore. So what a lot of libraries have gone to is a non-residential fee. Because now, all of our funding for our libraries are coming from within our county. And so when you have those that come in and get a card that are not part of your county, then when they do not bring back, you know, your materials and all that, you have no recourse as to how to resupply because you're not able to restock or any of that. So I talked to several other libraries, one specifically in the city of Orange, and also one from Jeff Davis County Library. And what they did is they, they do have this non-residential fee, and it allows someone who is not a resident or has a, that does not claim Newton County as their official residence, that they offer a service called, you have a single membership, which we would like to do it for $15 a year. They still have to have a Texas driver's license. They still actually have to show proof to us that they do reside in Newton County by either a voter registration card or a tax form of some kind, which, this is mainly geared a lot for the Deweyville area because right, you're right there in the Orange County. And so what we would like to offer is a single membership of $15 a year, and then a family membership, which is $25 a year, which will allow them to use our services and still be able to have use of the library. Because what the city of Orange does, and where we were getting a lot of the people from that area, is this city of Orange required, anybody that lives within the city limits can have a card for free. But all those that are on the outskirts that did not live there, they were coming over to Newton County. You also had some from Morrisville and all of that. So the city of Orange does offer this also for their residents. So it just seemed the next logical step for us to be able to offer that. So I guess if they don't choose to pay that, then I can always recommend Vitor. That's the only one that still does it for free. But with our budgets, our book budgets and all of that, we don't have a lot of leeway to go into replacement mode. So this just seemed like the next thing for us to put in our policy book. So nothing else basically had changed. I kind of just wrote it out. We do have our own policy book, but this was just something that was not really in very good order. And I did run it by you and it looked okay to you, Courtney? Yes. So it's just something that before we opened the doors in Deweyville, I wanted to have this in place, that we agree, because it will be a line item thing. It will be, it will be something that we collect money on, that goes like, you know, our taxes, fines, all that kind of stuff. So it is something that is a money issue coming into Newton County and into the library system. So I didn't really, I don't guess, I guess it can, it goes up for a vote, but I didn't really need a signature. I just needed to know that we were, you know, it's in our policy to be able to do this.
Same at mine, it will stay in electric card.
And it will also go for here also, because we do have a lot of people that come in that do not have all of the required documents. It could be, you know, you have people just come through for short periods of time, but it's another option for us.
What does a library card allow you to do?
You have access to everything in the library system. You have access to all the books, the DVDs, the audio books, the computer systems, which a lot of times the computers are, in general, are free unless someone owes a fine, and then that kind of stops their use of that. So a lot of libraries have gone to the no-fine system. I don't know how they do it, because I don't know how you get your money back. For instance, the one that we were talking about locally, that still owes a significant fine, well, their services then kind of go, they have none. But, and then it allows you to, our Tech Share Program, which are all kinds of resources that we have through the Texas State Archives Commission. It has, was and may help, it has all kinds of jobs, genealogy, everything. So it just allows you to use all the services that we have.
Ms. Art, IT tech does your checking for cyberware and that kind of stuff, routine basis?
He does. Yes. Well, and I also have, one of my staff members is the one that manages the ones on our computers and the one covering Deweyville. But the person that we have on staff on our payroll out of Houston, he does do a lot of our remote stuff. He has access to our computer systems and he's able to take care of all that. In fact, they're in the process of getting those computers in Deweyville all lined up with all the programs and then ask for speed. Yep, we have it. We do not use the Windows Defender. He recommended another program. It's F-Bro for us. It's based, it's geared for a lot of what libraries use. And so that's what we have a subscription to, and it's on all of our computers.
Are we checking with Jasper, their charging fee for non-residential?
Right now Jasper's going through a bit of a budget cut, so they're really not requiring much of anything, except they just want people to come in the doors. Their funding has been decreased a little bit. They used to have this non-residential fee. They don't at the moment. But through, another program that's offered through the Texas State Archives Commission is a Tech Share Card. And if your library is an accredited library, and you are a member in good standing of any library in the state of Texas, you may get that card. It allows you to go to any public library system within the state of Texas and use that. So we do that with Jasper, because they used to have a requirement where you had to live within the city of Jasper to have a card. But through that, this is, and this will allow us to be able to do that too. We have Tech Share for ours too, because we are accredited.
Library in Jasper, just don't operate that. They don't have one in Buna, did it?
Yeah, well, it's private. It's privately owned in Buna. And Kirbyville has one, but they're not, they're not county. I think those are city and private. We are the only, in the county, we are the only county library.
It makes sense, right?
It's just an extra way to cover it. I mean, they will probably, and we will renew this every year, the issue that they're, and it's probably a good time to implement it because the system's been shut down for three years. So everyone's card in the past has expired every three years, and you have to go in and update everybody's information. So at this point, unless they've been going on and doing our ebook system, they, their cards have expired. So everybody, when they come in, will be starting all over again, to get a new library card, enter it all in again, and go from there. I just needed to see if it sounded like it was an okay thing. It seems to work for us. And with especially Deweyville area being down there in the bottom, we apparently had people coming over from Louisiana, because it's just so local. It's right there. But, you know, when they take off with their stuff, you need something. You know, you have to have a rule here and there.
Since we monitored, we monitored the number of folk that come through. If it don't work, if it, you know, cause a big decrease in participation or something, we can always...
We're going to get some, I mean, there's going to be some people that are not going to be happy about it.
Yeah.
Because one of the reasons they utilized Deweyville was because they didn't want to play with Orange for the same reason. But our tax dollars are, their tax dollars are not funding us. So there has to be something there, accountability.
I'll make that motion that we approve making changes to the current library system policies in regard to adding non-Newton County resident fees.
Okay.
Motion been made second to make the change to the current library system policies in regard to adding the non-Newton County resident fees. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Viable. Okay, number 14, considering appropriate approve memorandum of understanding between Texas statewide in optical channel plan. Mr. Olinbe?
Back in 2012, whenever the county got all new radios through a grant, there's some frequencies in there that are licensed through DPS. They're interoperable frequencies. And we did the same agreements back then. They've sent out a new update that changed some of those frequencies. Also DPS Communications has changed their name. They're now DPS Infrastructure Division. And so this is just an update that those frequencies again are licensed to them. They're not belonging to county. And it's just our agreement that with DPS that we can use those frequencies. Beelaw 3132, the BeMed and the BeFire, those frequencies are licensed through DPS. And mutual aid agreement, the other one, the second one, the next one after DPS Communications with DedCog. We redid that about two years ago with DedCog. They wanted to do that, not add a new MOU with DedCog, probably 10, 12 years. The state sent back the news year that they left the Alabama charter of the MOU. And so that's the only change to that is adding the charter and the MOU.
Here, motion is up, Nick. Second. Motion been made in second to approve memorandum of understanding between Texas statewide in optical channel plan. and optical channel plan. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Viable? Okay, number fifteen, done heard that report on approving the regional mutual aid agreement between Dedco and Newton County and the changes they've made to that. Make the motion to approve the regional mutual aid agreement between Dedco and Newton County?
Second?
Motion been made in second to approve the mutual aid agreement between Dedco and Newton County? Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Viable? Okay, number sixteen is to renew the tax employment insurance for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Christie Hallway.
Yes, sir, we're just asking for a number on our two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty insurance. The medical went up slightly, the dental came down slightly, and the vision and the life insurance stayed the same.
When does this have to be approved? And the reason I'm asking, I'd just like to want him to come down and explain the things that happened in the past.
He would have been here today. I had him scheduled to be here today. I fully judge what you said, it wasn't necessary at this time. But if you want me to schedule him to come back and talk to you, he can.
I'd just like to explain why things happened last year like they did and wouldn't expect the same thing this year.
Well, anytime y'all get ready for him to, him to explain himself again and then our renewal will start next July.
That's just what we just support that.
We've tried to crunch this in and too late of a date.
Well, I have no problem, I have no problem with that. I'll let the man come and explain.
I will get in here and put that on your agenda, call him, Christie, be here the next regular session to explain any questions that may arise. Okay, I'm making the motion that we renew, the renewal of the tax employee insurance for two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty year.
And the legislature that says it's not more changes. What question, did they say even about any changes this year?
What did I know?
Okay, the motion been made second to renew the tax insurance, employee insurance for two thousand nineteen and twenty. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Viable? Number seventeen is to approve equipment lease purchase agreement between Wells State Bank and Newton County for two thousand nineteen John Deere tractor and mower, boom mower for precinct one.
This is the lease purchase agreement for the judge just said it's the tractor and the boom mower. The rate's three point six one percent and we're gonna do two payments. The first one will be due September ninth of two thousand twenty.
Those paid?
Yeah, the first payment. We'll do it in two payments. We'll do twenty and twenty-one. We do it in a year.
I'll make that motion.
Sure you will. Motion been made in second to approve the lease purchase agreement between Wells State Bank and Newton County for two thousand nineteen John Deere tractor and boom mower for precinct one. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I can't afford it, but...
You're a thief. Now, I'll let you use your old.
Your old, I'll take anything right now. Nine minutes in the shop, three weeks.
How much was cash profit?
Uh, hundred twenty-nine.
Just gotta hold on a little bit, you pay for fifteen years ago. That's what thirty thousand less than another quarter, guys, for the same thing.
That's a hundred twenty-nine thousand, is it? Two payments?
What time you get them?
Is that two hundred fifty thousand?
No, that's the total cash profit. For the, as for the tractor and the mower.
That's the correct answer.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, all in favor? Viable? Okay, number eighteen is to approve lease purchase agreement between Wells State Bank and Newton County for John Deere six seventy G motor grader for precinct one. Ms. Leah?
Oh, it is with the same bank, the same state bank, same interest rate, three point six one. And we're doing this one in three payments. The first payment will be due on September ninth of two thousand twenty. And this one with the cash profit is two hundred seventy-nine.
I'll make that motion again. I thought it looked like they separated those out a little bit so it wouldn't have been so obviously nobody's mind. I took it together.
Yeah, took all the money, take this while you won't have none.
You sure you're not gonna run again?
I apologize.
Here, second?
I second the motion.
Motion been made in second to approve the lease purchase agreement between Wells State Bank and Newton County for John Deere six seventy G motor grader for precinct one. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Viable? Okay, we're looking to enter into the public hearing on the tax rate. Ms. Leah?
Oh, our, we organize this one, which will be awesome for the week. The total tax rate with the position is point six nine zero eight seven three, which is point zero zero one above last year, which is just very small. I mean, it's less than a penny. The proposed tax rate is point oh three three one three four and MNO tax rate is point six five seven seven three nine. The amount is the, the real back rate.
Is that all? Public?
We don't have a tab in the purple or anything. It's just, are you out any comments, questions or I would do my best, so.
Okay, number twenty is twenty twenty budget workshop. Leah, you got anything on that?
Yes, sir, I've got it. The only thing I have on that is there is a few changes we've made since, since we filed a proposed budget. One thing is the district attorney had requested to add, excuse me, cellphone allowance to the purchase assistant and she moved that cost down from down within her budget. So, there's no change to her overall budget. In her, in the DA's state funds account, she moved around her assistant DA salaries in office supplies and the overall budget did not change on that. The justices in precinct one had requested to add nine hours of leave to her part-time and plug that in there. It was a difference of, it was about seven thousand dollars difference.
And I thought she was already giving forty-nine.
No, she was just giving twenty and y'all told me to go ahead and plug that in there because y'all were thinking the chip's twenty-nine, she only had twenty. So, this will move her up to twenty-nine hours of her part-time. And then the airport, we increased the improvements line by twenty thousand dollars due to the grant that we are receiving from Tax Off. And this will cover the resurfacing of the runway instead of just what we were looking at before, just the repairs to it. It's actually now covered our part of the resurfacing. And then on, in county property under paid building expenses, we increased that by twenty thousand dollars to cover some needed repairs that need to be done up there. And that was the only changes.
Judge says, has the title county judge said anything to you about a nine one one coordinator? I suggested that he follow you. They're wanting to move the nine one one coordinator for Newton, Jasper and Title County to, not to South, hard left, also. And we would all like to keep him here if we can. I don't know what all it's going to entail, but I'm sure he'll be calling. And it may, it may end up, they got office space in Title County for him. There's also office space in the building they're in now too, but I understand Dedco don't want it. I don't think they'll leave the period. But anyway, he'll be, he'll be calling, I'm sure.
Yeah, I have one.
I don't, I don't see, well, I do see the purpose of moving, at the start of it. I certainly don't see the purpose of moving nine one one coordinators to Lutken when they're working south end. And that may, that may entail some money, I don't know.
Yeah, that'll, we'll have to do something.
What y'all buying down? What y'all buying down there? I heard something about money, but that's...
The building on the, the roof on the K building, I've worked on it, I've worked on it. I patched on it, I patched on it. I think I know what caused our problem. I just now it's hard trying to fix it. It's gonna be the roof. Really, I'm like, listen to Mr. Miller.
That's the roof, huh?
Yeah.
Please.
I thought the same thing. It's gonna need a summer, it's gonna need it.
Did they?
Especially when the rain sets in, it's gonna...
Did they add something to that sign that's up there? I looked, they looked different from some days.
That's how I look.
You're good.
We're gonna do it, we're gonna do it, we're gonna have it, you know?
On the roof?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna do it.
Well, no, you can't do it fifteen yet. No.
Where is it?
I believe, I mean, for, I might call it fifteen, okay?
Oh, no, don't be okay. That's what I thought when I had mine.
We'll do whatever you want, dude. I just know you got a leak on it.
In Burnsville, that needs to be fixed, but I just not much on those materials.
You hanging on that?
Yeah. I don't know. We'll cross it when we need to.
Looking what, four hundred dollars?
Something like that.
Fifteen is doubtful.
I don't know what that number is, but it ain't getting... I say close to ten, probably the ten. Big building.
Break through.
It's easy to put on, but we'll probably need to scrape them off. I need to...
Start at four or five layers.
I need to scrape them off and I need to see where, I need to fix what's...
Repair it. But with the building.
We'll cross it when we need to, I'm just saying this one. Where it sets in, we're all gonna be getting phone calls.
We're gonna tell them, we tell them to take the replacement.
Don't get bills, though.
Give him a tag note for an answer.
Yes, you do.
Whoa, wait. One thing.
You probably wanna talk about, you probably wanna go into the public hearing.
Okay.
If you're asking about salaries.
All right.
Please, you guys, for changes, something you need to come and hear this discussion.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that?
Nothing.
Okay, let's go to number twenty-one, one of the public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty budget. And...
Okay, so the thing, Judge, you're allowed to speak.
Okay.
Yeah, there's something I wanted to point out and I don't know if it's overstated or if it's a mistake or what, whatever. I noticed that the courthouse janitor makes twenty-two hundred and thirty-five, well, will of the upcoming budget make twenty-two hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty cents more than I court will make. And to me, that doesn't seem fair. My clerk, all second deputy. Flirts have to attend school, they have to have qualifications, they have money, they have court documents, all sorts of things, they have. Now, I'm not down in the janitor, don't get me wrong, we got, ought to have them, but to me, that just didn't seem to act like, like it should be. And of course, it's up to you to do as you will feel, but I just wanted to point that one little thing out.
The janitor's salary is like the first thing to his salary.
So, you, you got a part-time employee, right?
No, I was full-time, but if I shared her, she could be a full-time employee, but I have her half the time and just admit that, look. Half the time. Hoodie Ashmore also has, it makes us, I think KK's office has some, but Reeves, I don't wanna open up a whole can of, well, too late, but...
Yeah, that's the old bit, that's the work ground.
But there are several there that, that would also, I do.
Well, it's the same thing, mate, they can board them up on them.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So, what, what does the janitor make?
For twenty twenty, she'll be making thirty-one...
Thirty-one, eight, fifty-five.
Thirty-one and thirty-five, and the second deputy makes, um, twenty-nine, six, twenty, and twenty-three. And that's, you know, and we've talked about salaries, the salary structure, you know. I mentioned it to y'all in the workshop. Judge and I were gonna start looking at how... Mentioned it to y'all, but of course, Judge and I, we're going to start looking at our salary structure because it's. I shouldn't blame you. Yeah, anyway, but it's not something, we talked about it, because it's not something we can rush into. It is something we really need to start, we really need to take some time to look at our salary structure, because it's just been one of these, attack is always done, so we just left it like that. So, but I think we're going to start, you know, after we settle on from budget and everything, start looking at it, and then as a group, we'll start looking at it and what we can do to fix the differences in salaries, you know, and to really get it into an order, as you call it. And that's something we had talked about from the very beginning of the year. It's going to take us all to sit in on it and do some time to work on it.
I think our system is too vague. I think we're fitting people into categories in which they, they shouldn't be put in. I didn't have time to actually, I have presented this to Leah's and looked at the description of the job, and, and that depends on the rate of pay that you get. So being this my first year, and this reflects on my first year, but it is something I've had in mind, and, and we will start working on immediately. That we restructure how people get paid in Newton County.
And that's where the job descriptions are going to come in. They're so poor, a very, a good detailed job description that Judge had talked about earlier this year that, you know, we all need to start working on. I know some offices don't even have them, you know, real, it's just real short and sweet. But you need a good detailed job description for your office. And does every department have a first deputy?
No. No. No, I mean, as far as us, is there others other than JP's? Because we had, when we got our clerk's page, it instantly was a second deputy.
That's how it was presented way back, you know, way back there. And that's why we're looking at, you know, we've been talking about it, and that's why we want a good detailed job description. And that way, we can go from there.
And y'all didn't realize, you'd make a job description look just wonderful. They hung the money, so. And if you look at your job.
Whiteout, and then that's an advantage of small county, because we have a lot of them.
I'm not saying it, but hey.
Huh?
I'm not saying it, but hey.
I'm just saying, everybody else has thought about what the budget come up here.
Well, it didn't see. Nine one one coordinator is all that I have.
Why would we bring her here if we got a center somewhere?
Well, they've got an office for her.
I was going to say, over here.
In the house. Which line of the bed long she's here.
Should have her home.
I just don't, I just don't, just don't know what it's going to cost, if anything.
We don't air it. We don't meet her. I ain't got there yet.
Appreciate you bringing it to our attention, but it was also approved through the commissioner's court as her salary, because we raised her from a part-time to a full-time position.
And I knew that she was going to be working on these other salaries.
Who are we talking about now?
Because I knew that we were going to be working on the salary. Way sound was done, so not to.
Custodian.
Go get over.
Yeah. Because that's a better, that's a better term. I'm not going to say anything yet. Oh, that's what I'm not.
I'm just telling you, don't point your finger straight at me.
Well, I don't know, that that ain't what I was doing at all. I don't know, no, I'm pointing out something I knew.
Just tell you that for a week, find something on it. Every time I go, he's always.
Well, I looked at it.
He was trying to find something on it.
I can add, I mean, I can do much, but I can't.
Okay, Bert, has got any more questions? Any comments? If not, we'll move on to twenty-two. Approved the adoption of the twenty twenty Newton County budget and appropriate action.
Do you do some discommunication, you get the tax rate adopted, everything the same day? I would request that we change that, and we're going to try to schedule on, what do you say, the sixteenth for a special court so that we can have the adoption of the budget and the tax rate all at the same time.
Okay. I'll make that motion, and we table this about approving the adopted twenty twenty Newton County budget until we straighten out all the communication issues. Okay, motion been made, second we table this to a future date, which is September ninth, September sixteenth.
We only have something on six, two, nothing for you to do yet. Might have been a bad thing.
That's my case to get the phone.
Okay.
Sixteenth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we, motion been made, second we table this to a future date, which is September ninth, September sixteenth.
We only have something on six, two, nothing for you to do yet. Might have been a bad thing.
All in favor? Five oh. Okay, we're down to paying the bills?
None of that money left standing now.
Okay, uh, paying the bills for August two thousand nineteen. General fund, four hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars, nine cents. NCC accrual, twenty thousand, nine hundred ninety-three dollars, seventy-six cents. DA statement, two thousand, five hundred eight dollars, thirty-two cents. Road bridge general, twenty-six thousand, two hundred thirty-one dollars, thirty-six cents. Road bridge precinct one, eighty-five thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars, sixty-four cents. Road bridge precinct two, seventy thousand, one hundred forty dollars, eighty-seven cents. Road bridge precinct three, twenty-one thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars, five cents. Road bridge precinct four, nineteen thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars, thirty-six cents. Forehouse security, five hundred twenty-four dollars, seventy-four cents. VAW grant, five thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars, four cents. Commissioner's special precinct one, nineteen thousand, four hundred seventy-one dollars, thirty-one cents. Commissioner's special precinct two, thirty-one thousand, ninety-five dollars, sixty-four cents. Commissioner's special precinct three, thirty-six thousand, nine hundred one dollars, forty cents. Commissioner's special precinct four, ninety-nine thousand, four hundred thirty-six dollars, six cents. Dedicated road precinct one, two hundred forty-two dollars, ninety-three cents. Breakfast preservation, one thousand, eighty-five dollars, forty-five cents. Lateral road precinct four, nine hundred fifty-two dollars. Solid place, eighteen thousand, five hundred nine dollars, thirty cents. Photo registration, four thousand, forty dollars, ninety-nine cents. Law library, three hundred ninety-two dollars. Newton County Library, twelve thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars, sixty cents. Historical commission, two thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars, ninety-six cents. Historical book fund, five hundred twenty-five dollars, ninety-nine cents. Hazard mitigation grant, three hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred three dollars, thirty-six cents. FEMA, six thousand, fifty-six dollars, forty-two cents. Other grants, one hundred ninety thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars, forty cents. City center, two thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars, eighty-four cents. Technology fund, seven hundred sixty dollars, four cents. The grant total of one billion, four hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred sixteen dollars, ninety-two cents. And about five hundred seventy thousand of damage grant funds.
Any question? Now, they hear a motion, pay the bills?
No, ma'am.
Second. Motion been made, second we pay the bills. All in favor? Five oh. Just hear the motion to adjourn?
Judge, one second. Before y'all, sorry, this isn't efficient, but I did want to make sure that each of you received copies of the thank you notes that were done by patients in Shannon Kincaid, granddaughters of Miss Mary Balch, that we had the key ceremonies for her house on October the nineteenth, right, Rhonda? August, August the nineteenth. Sorry. They're kind of, kind of light, but these little girls wanted to make sure and thank each and every one of you for everything that had been done for them and their grandmother.
I do, do know that they was two happy little kids that they, and they were showing off their room and that kind of stuff, and they were really proud of it.
Oh, yes, and just so y'all know, they have come by to see me a couple times and let me know the status of what was going on and how great everything was. So Grandma has had to bring them by the office to visit with me. So, but I do have the originals at the office, they are kind of light, but since the G L O, since we're keeping the original files on behalf of Newton County, I've just put them in our files that I keep them for.
Judge, I would like to remind Commissioners Court of the meeting this afternoon at two o'clock with the representative from the General Land Office, Tina Lewis. She'll be going over the status of the current grants that are being administered, and hopefully some additional grant funding opportunities that are going to come up.
Anyone else? Motion been made, as we adjourn, all in favor? Eleven twenty-four.
Jane, hang on. Judge, did you sign this?